Okay, so welcome. Really quickly, just so Rebecca can capture who's here for us. If we could go around the room and give our names. I'll need those because as we put together the presentation for the board, I want to make sure I capture the names of the people who've participated. So, let me start with you, Mike.
Sure, I'm Mike Ferriola, Facility Director for the school district.
And I'm Brian Boss, I'm the Chief Financial and Operations Officer for the district.
Jason Hendricks, parent.
Kimmy Butter, parent.
I'm Devin Diggs from the Cortland Press, not part of the meeting, but certainly.
Trish Bailey, retired educator, community volunteer.
I'm Kate Porzeman, a parent.
Jared Cooksey, a parent, and husband of teacher.
Jason Bradbury, teacher.
Kirby Jaeger, parent.
Jennifer Bell, parent.
Lori Yarborough, parent, and Synchro Professor, Apple.
Want to introduce yourself? This is Michelle Thompson, she's our board chair.
You would have done.
She said no.
Brandon's not be able to come to me.
Yeah, she texted me, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Michelle is a parent of a staff member and a grandparent of children, and her children all went through late ones, so thank you for being here tonight. Okay, so we got a lot of work done at the last meeting and came to a unanimous decision that we're going to run the supplemental, or we're going to recommend to the board that we run the supplemental levy measure and the plant facility levy measure on the same ballot and basically give our patrons the opportunity to vote on each tonight. What we need to do is come to some sort of an agreement on the, what we want to recommend to the board with regard to the amount that we want for each of those levies and then the date that we want to run those, there are four on which we can choose. So we'll go through those. I do want to come back to, we talked about the idea of a permanent levy at the last meeting and somebody asked the question, if we were to have one on the books and then the district needed to come back to the voters for additional money five years down the road, what does that look like? And so, we weren't sure and the information that we gave wasn't accurate, so we wanted to come back to that. If you have a permanent levy on the books and you take a measure to the voters to increase that levy, that permanent, that levy becomes the permanent levy amount. So instead of having two levies running simultaneously, it actually becomes your new permanent levy. Does that make sense? So, we talked a little bit about permanent levy last time. I don't think that we were thinking that this is the right time, but I did want to give the accurate information and then kind of recheck and make sure that my assessment of where we were last time is accurate. Brian has a little bit of information on the levy rate and if we adjusted it up or down, what that does to taxpayers and their taxes, so he can talk a little bit about that. And then, I did put together just a draft of the presentation to the board so that we didn't have to do that tonight. And you can just help me, I want to put everybody's names in here with the information that's in here and make sure it's accurate. And if there's anything you want me to change or add or delete, we can do that. So those are kind of our targets for tonight. Okay, so let's start with the recommendations for the amounts. The current supplemental levy is 9.52 million, is that right, Mike?
Yes.
And then the current plant facility levy is 1.146 million?
Current one is zero.
Right, that's true.
It was one.
The one that expired last year was 1.146.
Correct.
So, are you okay to start with supplemental levy and just talk about what we, what we want that to look like? And, and just because the majority of you here are community members and not district employees, that's actually helpful to us because you'll probably have a little bit better pulse on what people in the community are going to be able to tolerate as far as an amount, so I'll just open it up for discussion.
I would like to know what, what you may think the minimum amount would be? That you, have you thought about what a, and then go up in there what you just need for, I don't want to say bare bones, but what the minimum amount would be?
Well, usually, that's really not, I mean, I can give my opinion on that, but I, as the CFO, I'm more, I call balls and strikes. So I'm, I'll let you know how much it is. But often the program people, as far as the principals, superintendent, assistant superintendent, say, "We need, these are the items that are the minimum." And now to say, "Well, it costs this much." I can tell you that, you know, you can look right now that just as, with the 9.52 million that we have, we, this is the fourth year of that amount. And so, if you think about just costs in the last four years, it's, you know, 9.5 doesn't get what it did four years ago. So there's inflation to consider a little bit, I mean, but when we build the budget, not, levy's not our only revenue. You know, we have had increases from the state and that's helped, you know, mitigate some of those things. So, a lot of it will be, I would say that if we wanted to maintain status quo and that.
That's probably a better thing, status quo versus.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we would, can for the next two years, we have the same supplemental levy rate and minimize the impact to the program? Yeah, probably, but we can't stay there forever.
Sure, sure.
So, I mean, I mean, I'm not, that's just sort of the, you know, there, there's a lot of ways you, you can look at it. We could say, "Well, we can, you know, reduce over here to pay for the increase over here." I mean, a lot of times those opportunity costs are made all the time. So I'm sort of giving you a, a really, really wash.
I understand, personally for me, that's just, I just always need a starting point when I even start my own personal budget.
Well, I mean, in my own personal, you know, and this depends, you know, I would say that I would, at least at a minimum, from my perspective, would be not lower. But, you know, there could be, you know, there could be different opinions. People saying, "Well, you know, tighten up your, you know, some of these areas or maybe some of these programs and reduce some things." You know, but that would be, I guess, for me, but, you know, I certainly don't want to, you know, levies are not an easy thing to pass. Our community's been supportive and so you certainly want to have something out there that people will support.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have an idea of what the anticipation of the supplemental levy is going to cover?
I, I'm assuming it will cover what it has been covering, which would be our safety programs, our athletic and activities programs, and, and then the difference between what we get from the state for salaries and benefits for staff and what we actually pay. Those are the three big areas that our levy helps cover.
Transportation too.
And transportation.
Do you have that spreadsheet that you use before?
Yes, I do.
If you're a cop.
Did you take that at all through, again, based on what you told me to do?
With having to pay, you know, to get those teachers, just to go over to Spokane, right?
Yeah, there definitely is.
Competition with the job market.
Yeah, with, yeah, with not just, yes, well, can for sure Washington and also with even our neighboring districts, right, Falls Falls and Cortland, or we're all in the same competition for good, good people.
Do we have projections for student count going forward to the end of the period that the supplemental levy covers?
I haven't done a projection for next year. I mean, I, last time I did a cohort study, it looks like we're having about anywhere from 1% to 2% growth every year. So, you know, that's, that's where we were this year. We're up only about 47, 50 kids. So you, we probably have maybe, you know, think of year one, 60, 70 more kids, year two, another 60, 70. It's sort of been the trend.
And this year it's kind of flat, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, we, we're up a little bit. We're up about 40 kids overall, with some buildings being down and some. We were like at 47, 13, now we're at 47.
60.
62, so, which is, you know, almost 1%. So that's sort of, so it looks like the cohort model that I've been running is sort of staying true, but sometimes you know you have. But the trend lines down there, yeah.
So shouldn't the baseline be the prior one adjusted for new students and then adjusted for inflation? That's what I do.
You know, there, it, it depends. There can be, sometimes a supplemental levy might be run that, you know, because you're doing a specific thing to adding programs or specific to staff, so it's not just accounting for growth, but accounting for maybe a new initiative.
Program group?
Yeah.
Do we have program group numbers or anything like that?
Right now, there hasn't been significant programming. I mean, I'm not, I haven't been asked to run numbers like if we're going to add a, a new program, so that's why I sort of said, you know, status quo.
I'm going to pull up an updated sheet. This team must be awake. I don't anticipate, to your question, Nate, I don't anticipate adding new programs. The board may have some ideas about some new programs that they want to talk about, but at this point, we don't have anything, for this year anyway, going into next year that we would be adding. So it's really just about continuing the programs that we do that in place.
That makes some sense.
That's your highlights, is that you stepped up.
Oh, thank you.
We did that earlier.
District newsletter is important.
The supplemental wasn't run the last time, though. There was specificity to the numbers that were asked of the public. And I'm just curious, with that specificity of, you know, we want money specific for this, money specific for that, within the new assignments of money to maintain the status quo, was any of that taken into consideration? And if so, where was that?
Well, when we ran the last levy, we maintained the advanced learning program. That would continue. We maintained full day kindergarten. That's continuing, although that, to that point earlier, the governor increased the literacy dollars that we get, so that helps to offset some of what we used from the supplemental levy for that program. The levy supports all our safety.
Right, right.
And the extracurricular. And then, at the elementary level, to ensure that our elementary teachers had a correct period of day like our secondary do. Our kids have a special a day, and so we had to increase staffing for that. That was part of that levy.
Okay.
So those are all continuing unless the board wants to look at, making changes to it, but we're definitely not adding anything.
Okay.
Is there still COVID money being used for some salaries and stuff? It's going to end. When will that end, those dollars?
This year. You know, we're going to use those dollars for, some have to be for what they call learning bots. So we're going to use, definitely for a couple curriculum adoptions. And we have a couple cap, some HVAC projects that have been approved, but we just haven't paid yet because of the, it's just hard to get materials right now. The things are in backward. And then, we'll probably use it for some salaries right now, just to try and just, there's a timeline on the dollars, so just like we all want COVID to go away from the finance director's point of view, I just, it'd be nice to have those grants wrapped up and then we just move forward.
Remember the board meeting, you were talking about either this year you have to have, use up this amount, and next year you have another amount.
Yeah, yeah, there was deadlines, like there was three, they passed three different measures and they all had three different ending dates, yeah.
Can I ask, what you were just talking about on the specials? To give a teacher a downtime hour or whatever they need, you hire another teacher too, for, for specials, is that what you call it?
Yep, so we added, we added technology at all six elementary schools. We added an additional teacher for either an art or music or PE or, and then we have our librarians.
That's what I was wondering, why it wouldn't be like a music or a PE or art?
But, yeah, we used to try to have one per day for five days. We had to add staff in order to get enough slots for everybody to have five. I just think, because I think we still don't have all of those in each other's schools. Because we, we've struggled to hire music teachers because they don't exist anywhere. People are not going to school to become music teachers. And so, we've had to, instead of music, some schools have done art. They've had to get creative and, you know, they provide that fine arts education because we can't have somebody not really, or just have them with the courses we have to learn.
That's probably good information. I don't know how or when you share that, but that's good information now because I, I know hearing from other parents was like, "Why is there not music anymore?" Music concerts are kind of nice and they're a fun community event for people to get around. And so, you, they think of what they're voting for in specials and then you never see it. It's not because the school doesn't want them, it just looks a little bit different right now.
Most of the weeks, bring them back.
So I did do what this team suggested last time we met, and I put the salary base apportionment in the state discretionary just in one column so that this is all state money, this is what we spend, this is what we use from the supplemental levy to make up the difference between what we get and what we spend. And then, based on average salaries in these groups, this is the number of people so supported by levy dollars in this column.
And that's what we currently, this is what we do right now.
That's what we do right now.
Right now.
Yeah, this is sort of looking at last year.
Last year?
That ended in June, our fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we just started this year, so I could comp something I guess similar to that for this year with budget, but it would be just based on budget, not on actuals. This is a little closer to sort of what happened.
And are we projecting to, are we looking to possibly bring in more staff, more teachers, more certified teachers, that means everything's pretty.
Yeah, we, I think we added four or five teachers at the beginning of the year. Brian had budgeted some of the COVID dollars that Jason was talking about to cover those costs. So I, the one thing that I think is important, and I, I, I did, Rebecca and I worked today, this is going out, so the information, our district newsletter will go out on October 29th and be mailed to all homes. So that spreadsheet that we worked on last time that I just showed you. And, and then this language, and this is just draft because I wrote it today, is, is going out to our taxpayers with some information that helps explain that table. So I can share this with you guys and then if you want to give me some feedback. Again, this was, I, I wrote it today and I, the way I write is I write and then I walk away and then I have to go back to it with fresh eyes and, and do some wordsmithing. And I'm taking it to the district leadership team tomorrow to have them look through it, but I'll share this out with all of you, so that will go out. But I think it's important for people to understand that this doesn't mean we're overstaffed. This is truly the difference between, because based on enrollment funding, we're right where we should be with certified staff and administrators and we're actually over, we are overstaffed according to the state in classified staffing. But every school district in the state is overstaffed in classified because of special ed populations and the IEP requirements that we have to meet. We are not overstaffed by 99. This is really the difference between what we get from the state and what we actually pay. So that was important for people when they look at this, to understand.
What we would lose if we didn't have it, right?
Because these, like custodial is like nothing with the state, the state should pay.
Eleven dollars and 56 cents or something, Brian and I figured out is what we get per hour.
Notice you have a bunch of openings right now that you can't fill.
That you can't fill.
Can you remind us what the 9.32 ends up being, like cents on the dollar in your property taxes? Like, I'm going to be honest, I don't often look at your property tax.
So that's, Brian put this in.
That's like your escrow, like you just pay your escrow account.
So Brian put together a couple of slides for us.
So this just shows a, you know, quick snapshot of what our levies have been. A couple of years ago, I highlighted where we are for this year. Or, and that's a projection on that, you know, so the column right there says market value, that's the market value of the district. So you can see that, you know, 4.2 to 5.1 is a huge increase. 5.1 to 8.4, that is unbelievable. That's like an 80% growth, but that was Cooken County. So what happens is that you can see that our total tax rate, if you look at 2021, our supplemental levy was $2.10 per thousand. And then, we had a bond and we also had a, I'm sorry, I, I got a, I did have a plan in there, but anyway, the bond levy, the total levy rate was at 272. Then it went down to 225. I, I cracked, I corrected to the bond rate on the 2223. So, the total levy rate was 272, 225. You can see it dropped a doll, it'll, projected to drop a dollar, to $1.24. Now, of course, that's being multiplied by the value of your house, so it ends up becoming sort of a wash. So the bottom line is, is because we're asking, the last few years, you can see 2021, we had an 8.9 million dollar levy, a 1.1 plat levy and a 1.4 million bond. So, about 11.5 million. You can see the next year, the supplemental went up, but the bond levy went down. So what was collected, that 11.6 is pretty, you know, very close to a push from the previous year. So, even though the market value went up, people really weren't paying more school taxes because we weren't asking for really getting their money relative. Does that make sense? This year, coming up, the plant levy you can see is at zero, so that is, was not reauthorized. So we're asking for a million dollars less than last year. So as a general rule, if your house value went up similarly to your neighbor's, you will be paying less in school district taxes because we're asking for less. We're asking for a million dollars less. 2023, 24, if, let's say, we went out for a 9.52 million dollar levy, supplemental kept the same, we would collect the same on the bonds. And, and so, if property values didn't go up at all, I didn't project 23, 24, it's, it's flat. And then, you'll see in 2024, 25, we pay off our mortgage, our bonds, and so we will not be collecting that three years down the road or in that school year. So that's just sort of a quick snapshot. So if we go to the next slide, so what has that, this is sort of a busy slide, but what this shows you is, what does that mean in dollars that you would pay? So, for the property taxes this year, I just had the appraised value of a house, homeowners exemption and taxable value. Because you do have, get that homeowners exemption of a maximum 125,000. And so if you have a, you know, $200,000 appraised value house, maybe a condo, you'd get the homeowners exemption 100 and your taxable value's 100. You can see that, that obviously the homeowners exemption, as your house goes in value, you know, is, does not have the same impact when it's lower because it's not proportional. But bottom line is that if you had, I highlighted sort of the, the 400 to the 600 because the median house in Rafterm right now, amazingly, for those who of us have been in the area a long time, is like 570. Which, you know, even five years ago, the median was probably 2, 280, 270, 260. So, but that's, so regardless, that if you had a house assessed at $500,000, your taxable value's 375, the annual cost of the supplemental's 424, the annual cost of the bond is 441, so you'd be paying $465 in taxes. So, around, I mean, that's, that's what you would be paying for Lakewood School District taxes.
And then what if we add a plant facilities to that?
So, then you can see in the yellow and the green, I added, if we added a million dollars.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's, that's why I added that at the end. So, you know, we could, if we added 500,000, we could cut these numbers by two. I didn't want to make it super busy. So a million dollars, given the same conditions as this year, you can see for 500,000, about $45 a year for that individual, or $3.75 a month.
For the additional?
For the additional. So the total would be the 465 plus the 45, so it'd be $510. Anyway, that's just to give the committee, so for every million dollars, whether we added it on the plant, whether we added it in the supplemental, the taxpayer sees the same because the dollar is the dollar. So if we would have maintained the 1.1 plant facility levy this year, you know, roughly, it would have been about $50 for a $500,000 home assessed of appraised value. And I shouldn't say, I should say, well, taxable value is the better term. If your, if your house was a, if they said it was, whatever the county said the value was and then they take that homeowners exemption and it's, obviously, if somebody has three properties, then one, you know, some of those properties don't get that exemption, so there's a lot of variations, but just sort of threw that out there for information.
The last time we had to run a supplemental levy, this chart didn't go to $800,000.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, so I sort of, and, you know, I knew, you know, there's, there's probably not a whole lot of homes out there for 150 anymore. I just wanted to show that as far as how the homeowners exemption works. The homeowners exemption is 50% of the value of, of the assessed value, but it's capped at 125.
So it's only 50% of a 200,000?
Right, many, many years ago, there was, I, there wasn't a cap, it was 50%. But they put that cap in. Maybe there was, I don't know, but they changed it over the years the legislature has.
Well, it just increased to 125 because for a while it was just a 500.
It was 100, yeah, it was a couple of years ago, yeah.
So it's not the county that does that, so.
Correct, it is a state legis, yeah, this is a law that was passed. So to change, you know, that dynamic would require state legislation.
So, any questions for Brian about this? Why don't we take, like, the next seven to eight minutes at your tables and just talk about what you're thinking with regard to the two levies and what you think our patrons can tolerate in this current economic point?
Well, Toby, do that, can you remind us what, what is needed for the plant levy? Well, Charlie, do that, can you remind us what, what is needed for the plant levy? So we've used that in the past for like school ma- maintenance.
The only thing we can use it for is capital projects and furniture costs, but it's the actual upkeep of the buildings. We get zero, well, we get, we get lottery dollars from the state for facilities and typically it's about three hundred to three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand that we get. This year we got more because the lottery tickets have been so big and so many people are playing, so we're putting money into these schools. But that'll, that could buy a small roof, and that's it.
I was gonna say, is there some in the building?
Well, so for Apple Elementary, for example, if the only thing wrong with Apple Elementary was truly the siding, it's like three fifty to five hundred thousand dollars to resite it. We're afraid to take the siding off because we, we don't know what's underneath it and how much that's gonna cost to fix, so.
They were told you can't even paint it because the siding is, I mean, it's bad.
Yeah, we'd have, that's possible. We, we did get one quote from a little construction company. They thought four to five would get it. Their concern was you, you could be, well.
Painting companies.
Well, no, you couldn't paint. You'd have to take the siding off, but then do you get in and, and as you start demoing some of that, you start damaging some, you know, windows and things like that, so you have to reframe the windows and then it becomes, when you start getting the siding of a building, you're almost getting to renovation. And so I, there's just, you, I don't know. But for the plant levy, the last several years, where a large majority of it has gone is to, we've roo- re-roofed many, many of our buildings. So you really will look at, I mean, the very first thing you have to do in a building is make sure that, you know, if it has water intrusion from the top, top, that, that just isn't working. So we re-roofed Spirit Lake, actually had to re-roof, re-roof Twin Lakes, even though it's a newer building. Um, when it was built in oh-six, that, the two huge snow years, that roof got damaged from the, I mean, there was like six feet of snow on that roof, had to shovel it. The guys who shoveled it caused holes. So we had to, we ended up having to replace that. We replaced Timberlake High School's roof that had active leaks. We've replaced almost all Lakeland High School's roof in different sections, because it's a hodge, hodge building over the years. We re-roofed now Lakeland Middle School. Betty Kiefer just came down this summer, Garwood was last summer. Um, so we've spent literally millions of dollars on roofs the last few years, um, so we've sort of caught up on that.
Like four, roughly four and a half million over the last six years. Um, maybe even a little bit more than that total.
Yeah. Um, that, the nap, a lot of that was prior to John Brown Elementary, actually. We just finished that, but then we did it in phases where we did some, we, we coated it to prevent the leaks and it's a twenty-year warranty. So that's where a lot of the dollars have been going. Also some HVAC projects, um, we replaced boilers. We continue with that. We've done carpeting. We re-carpeted the commons at at Lakeland High School. We just did some carpeting at Apple in one of the wings this, this summer. Um, we did carpeted at Garwood. We've been doing ceiling on the parking lots. Uh, we replaced the Timberlake High School track. And so that, I mean, yeah, I mean, there's ongoing projects, so the sup- the plant levy has supported ongoing maintenance and sort of aggressive maintenance, I would say. You know, replacing a roof is a almost more an aggressive, but it hasn't gotten to places where we really have the ability to renovate a school. Um, because when you really get into renovation, it gets six.
When it's a school that's been renovated.
We've never had a, we've never had a major renovation in this, in this. We've had where we've added a wing and maybe you've updated an office and things like that, but, you know, often if you're gonna do, like if you're gonna renovate John Brown, really try to bring it up to standards, I mean, you'd be put in a a modern HVAC system in, you'd be upgrading the, the old plumbing, you'd be upgrading, uh, the, the back end for the electrical, for the power.
Isn't that what happened too last time, and the amount of the renovation was almost equal to the new school cost?
Generally, when you look at, at some of our older buildings that are built in the sixties, that a a renovation in a new building, often square foot cost will be very similar. And so some districts will decide to push over and build new. Some districts will decide, I mean, truly, there's some buildings that they historical buildings, that they're just similar value that they'll refix. So like Court of Lane was gonna renovate Linton Elementary years ago, one of their old buildings on Northwest Boulevard going that way, and they, as they got into it, the renovation's gonna almost be more, and they actually built new. So and, but the costs were sort of similar square footage wise.
It was DCA building condition um, assessment. And so the board last year asked us to get an, um, kind of a neutral party to come in and, and actually, you know, Brian and Mike had done the BCS the year before. And, um, so they, we hired, we paid for somebody coming into this. So you can see the scores in twenty twenty-one and then the scores for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, Garwood is upgraded because we have done some work, that's the roof, right?
Yeah.
Brought it from poor to fair. Um, but I, the reason I bring this up, and this is gonna be really hard to read, but down here, the evaluator's notes say, buil- this is Lakeland Middle School building. Overall, indoor condition, cost of addressing deferred maintenance and systems deficiencies likely high compared to building replacement. These are things when we get into the long-range planning that we are gonna have to, um, talk about and figure out how we wanna address. But the plant facility dollars do help us. This is a great example, where we were able to take a building that scored poor and move it up to fair by doing some aggressive maintenance. So that, those dollars allow us to do that.
So that's the hard part, though, between a supplemental levy or plant levy or, you know, doing something now for the voter, the people, without them being aware and seeing this. They feel like they're constantly throwing money at the school and yet, you know, half our buildings are in poor condition. So they, they don't see that. I, I, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I'm just saying that there's a way that you can find that looking glass to, to identify or share this kind of information with the general public. And then, you know, I mean, or just have it out there or available as much as you possibly can, so those people who do want to research it and look into it a little bit more, they have a general idea and have a better description or identifying what the plant facility is, because, yeah, instantly you kind of look at, well, a plant facility, okay, well, what are they exactly doing? So they, they expect that that means we're gonna move three of these buildings from, uh, you know, they do a plant supplemental levy. They think they're three of these buildings that are gonna move up into somewhere else, and it doesn't. Because it's doing a bunch of other, it's, it's a lot of information, but I think it's important information for the voters to see that, because they're not understanding it, and so all they do is criticize what are you doing with our money? Why, you, you know? And, I don't know, don't know what the answer is necessarily, but, but trying to relay that information so that they do have a better perspective. I don't know if you, you know, education, have a lot of graphics in charge, but I think starting with uh, an avenue which broke down, I don't know if this is already on the website for public to see, but but those things might help contribute to the bigger picture for the community to see.
How much lower does Lakeland Middle School have to go before it's considered completely unsafe?
Well, like I, I've said many times, a building can be rated poor, doesn't mean it's unsafe.
But this is, this is, I'm sure what stemmed Dr. Meyer wanting to do the god awful big bond amount, right, that didn't pass. I mean, seeing, seeing a need like this, she was trying to accommodate.
She was trying to, yes, we're trying to look at the, that was part of the thinking, yeah.
Cause it would move one and it would bounce another and it would adjust the bigger bank for your budget.
Yeah, that was, that was, you know, part of the thinking, yes.
Okay, then just one more question. Remind me how much the plant levy was that just expired?
It was, we were, uh, collecting one point one four six.
So essentially.
Every year.
So between the supplemental and the plant, we were about ten million? A little, maybe a little more?
Yeah, between the, yeah, between the supplemental, the plant and the bond, we were a little over eleven.
Okay.
And now that the plant's not there, we're right around ten point five.
Okay.
With the, with the bond and the supplemental.
And the cost of the average ren- renovation for the bottom four of those buildings?
For a renovation?
Yeah, they're actually saying like Lakeland Middle School would cost us about the same to hold it and start over.
Right, which is what, though?
Twenty. It would be, that building would be probably twenty, price thirty million dollars.
I, but I think people need to see those, those price tags. They need to see those sticker prices in comparison to the Band-Aids so that they can actually see what's, you know, that, that's what you do with your own budget. You look at it, it's like, well, how many times do I, you know, repair this bathroom or do we, you know, or something, and so. I mean, just showing that information and putting those sticker prices so a person feels like they're weighing in and seeing the value as to why, I mean, it, it is a bigger ask, but it's. And I think in a few years, it looks like we're set up to, to ask for a, a bond, similar to what we'd asked for before with way more information to reiterate that. So then, I just say that to be cautious of what you ask for now on a plant levy. Keeping status quo might make sense to some degree, so you're not asking for a whole bunch and then say, okay, now we really want.
And now we need even more.
Do you have any idea what kind of facilities, like what kind of projects the facilities are gonna be needing over the next couple of years? I'm, I'm certain you guys know what the front issues are and what you can tackle. Is that, and how do you guys decide that?
Well, we're, we work with the, the board who, who's trying to give information and, and they're, um, helping us sort of identify priorities and, and projects. So what we've been trying to do the past few years is to address needs across the board. So we're trying to do every year, you know, for a while, we were trying to address a roof every year. Because they, we don't have to do that anymore, we can shift that. We were trying to do flooring every year, painting projects every year. Uh, HVAC as far as replacing the boiler or upgrading some of those systems. We added, um, controls. Um, we've been doing lighting projects. We just replaced the lighting, what gyms?
Twin Lakes Elementary, we did the gym and cafeteria, and we just finished Apple.
For, for some improvement lighting, so we're.
Up to LED.
Um, we're, we're looking at, uh, doing some security system upgrades as far as looking at, uh, our, the camera system and upgrading those systems and also more, uh, keyless entry to get away from keys and doing those projects. Those, the board's approved those, we're moving forward on those. So we're, I guess, as we're looking at that, we're, we're trying to not just focus on one area, but because it's, and just try to hit the needs that, you know, are that you address to the extent you can. So, I mean, we did carpeting at Mountain View this year and Apple. We'd like to maybe finish another wing of Apple and maybe go to another elementary school, Betty Kiefer. You know, the carpet isn't, you know, that's original carpet to the nineties. You know, so is that time to at least do, you know, the interior there. We're looking at, we're replacing some bleachers that were original to the buildings. We're doing that right now.
Do you mean carpet in classrooms or carpet in the gym?
Com- common areas, always.
Common areas like that, we, we've actually had gotten prices to like, go to either, uh, different flooring for the elementary gyms and not have a carpet, um.
What are, what are those run? I'm just curious, because our PTU is desperately looking for a new project and that the carpet is the A-one of the parents' rooms in the gym.
Wood?
Get rid of the carpet.
Are you talking for elementary sized gym? And are you talking carpet or are you talking hardwood?
Hardwood.
About a hundred and a half?
Yeah, it's, you know, probably a little more now.
We just did eighty for a playground that meant for the school, so it's not impossible, but.
So, my, yeah, I'm just saying that those are some of the, and when we looked at some of the projects, obviously these last few years, with the roofs becoming a priority, you know, we did defer some of those other things, just because it, uh, if you have active leaks, that, that's not good.
Yeah, I try to pri- I try to prioritize what's gonna be the biggest impact on the building, the teaching and learning environment, the safety and security and the comfort for staff and students. And so when you have a district that's been deferred, like ours has, I have to base everything off that. So the roofing was the number one priority six years ago, when I had sections of roofing falling in to the building. It's just, it's funny, people don't realize, six years of just doing roofs, that's one aspect of a building. You know, so the next level would be, like you're talking, would be siding. Windows, doors, frames, siding as one project. Um, and then go in further into the building, but when we start talking about that, we're talking about bond-type dollars. Uh, and so we just continue to prioritize daily on what's gonna be the biggest impact if we don't do that to a building. That's the only way I can do it. Brian and I tried to spread the love essentially to all buildings so that we're not really leaving anybody behind and maintaining as much together as possible, but it's a challenge. You know, I mean, um, it's a big challenge. So little wins like carpet in, in my world is a, it's a, makes a big difference on the morale of the building. It's a small, small thing on, on the big picture, but we just try to hit little bits here and there.
They got it. They got the carpet nailed.
Right, well, Apple's a good, a good, I mean, carpet example. So we got our foot in the door there. I'd like, I would like to continue next summer down the rest of the school, get into classrooms and things like that, and if the budget allows, we will do that. But big mechanical systems, things, if we had a boiler go down, it was last winter, we had to cancel school for a day because I could not heat the building. I'm focusing on things like that and, and more on the preventative side, which we never had before, to try to eliminate stuff like that. That affects an entire building. And to the point where you would have to possibly cancel a day or two. So that's how I prioritize what needs to happen at each location, so.
Yes, ma'am. Being, um, pretty new to the community, and I, just FYI, I'm really for levies, I always have been. Do you think in this community the figure of ten million would scare people? I don't know, I, I don't know the feel out there. If we moved this to ten something, just by that figure, ten million, would it be like sticker shock or something? Yeah.
Sticker shock.
This community's got to care about everything in today's environment. It doesn't matter what you do.
Yeah, so I, so I, I didn't know if they're, you know, I can say I know most.
The past one showed that they're used to that nine-ish range.
Well, the last time, so we went from eight point nine-nine to nine point five-two the last time we ran the levy and we did that, um, Brian actually had, uh, a bond guy came up and talked to our school board about, with all of the new growth in Rafteron, you could increase the current supplemental levy by five hundred thousand dollars and the new people and the new growth would pay for that and it wouldn't be an increased cost in, as far as the tax rate to the people who've been here. So that's how they landed. Is that right, Michelle? And I, wait, that was, the conversation was trying not to.
But, and, correct, you're right, that we, what was the amount that sort of? So some of the assessed value of the whole district goes up because of obviously just, there's more demand and housing prices are just generally rising. But some assessed value of the district is because they put a new subdivision and new growth that would have just still just been vacant land. So we had with the help of a financial advisor who works with municipal finance and that, sort of run some numbers and say, what was the value of that new construction? How much did that new construction generate in dollars based at your current rate? And it was right around that five hundred thousand dollars. And so the board said, well, if we raised that, effectively the new growth's paying for that five hundred thousand and it's flat for the people, even though our house went up, we're not a- adding to them. And that was the rationale, the board went up by the five hundred thousand. And at the same time, we were dropping our bond by five hundred thousand collections. So really, and that just was a good thing that happened because our bonds are winding down. We had done what they call a bond defecence to try to save interest and pay them off quicker, so that has helped with our, our bonds, you know, winding down, that there's been less impact of the patrons.
So that didn't necessarily answer your question. I guess my, my, my concern in talking to people in the community is everybody's watching every penny they're spending because gas is going up again, alarm, at an alarming rate. We were just down at three ninety-nine at Walmart, those walls, and yesterday it was four forty-nine. Um, so, there, there's that big swing and people, I was talking to a gentleman who was filling up his truck and he was saying, I don't know how much higher I can go and still be able to afford to put gas in my truck. So, um, I do want us to be cognizant of the fact that nobody really knows what this is gonna look like in the next couple of years as far as inflation. The cost, the cost of gas is driving up the cost of everything. Uh, because it take, it costs more to transport food and, and everything else that we buy, so, um, I know, I know Brian's concerned also about the inflation and the increased cost to the school district. Um, but I do want us to be cognizant of the fact that we have people living on limited income.
Michelle, can you, can you speak for, might be a loaded question, but can you speak for your constituents or the board's constituents as far as that question? What do you think?
Uh, well, okay, I can't speak for the board, I can speak for myself. Um, I know that when it was brought to us about the last levy, our biggest concern was trying to do everything we could to maintain status quo. We did not want to, um, go after more money, especially given the fact, when I choose the words go after more money, it's, it, it seems like whenever there is a levy or a supplemental bond, you're always asking for more. Um, what was challenging for me was trying to understand, where are we utilizing this money? Because we have other monies coming in in different directions, we had all the COVID money, we had all this other money. So, just trying to get a fair understanding of the significance of why we need this and, you know, when are these things going to fall off? There was the, um, Bond Guru, I don't remember what he's called, but he did come and he did speak to the board, which is why the board chose to cause the increase to be a wash, so that we're still in a sense receiving the same amount of money to support what we have become accustomed to supporting. Um, that was the, um, most rational decision the board could make at that time with the information we had. I don't know that we did, um, an excellent job in conveying that to all of our constituents, that that's why we chose that amount to, to move forward with. But what I can say is, I know the community is extremely frustrated, or at least was extremely frustrated, with, you know, we keep asking for levies, but it doesn't seem like much changes. And we're not, at that time, hadn't been doing a good job of communicating about what is happening within the district. And we've made, with our new superintendent, we have made an intentional effort to repair those relationships with the community, get that information into the hands of the taxpayers so that they're all, we're all on the same page, we're all on the same team and we're all trying to help the district grow and move forward, um, in the right direction for the benefit of those kids, because they're our future community members. So, I don't know if that answered your question.
Brian, what, do you think inflation will have on costs?
Well, we're seeing some of that now, definitely with materials and supplies and things like that, so.
Hard to put a number on it?
It's hard to put a number on it right now, definitely, I mean, the easiest one, diesel costs last year were significantly over what we had anticipated with budget for the diesel costs, cause they really raised there at the end. Um, you know, by well over a hundred thousand dollars. We actually sort of, you know, a lot of times in a budget, I mean, you have that and then you have, we didn't have a huge snow year and we budget well over a hundred thousand dollars for snow removal and those costs are lower, so sometimes those things, you know, balance throughout the year, a lot of things. But yeah, I, I would definitely say that fuel costs, um, and just, we're getting just, if we are doing materials and supplies and Mike can speak you to the quotes, he's getting to do some of his work or, um, just parts, um, are higher.
It's, it sounds like you're not gonna see like fully the nine percent CPI headline number, it's up there?
Yeah, I mean, that, well, no, because at some point, we just, we will defer purchases. I mean, if it, you know, I mean, some of the budget at some point will, so let's say if instruction materials or, or science guides were up, I don't know, maybe they're up ten through fifty percent and principal sees them, you know, I tell him, well, you know, make it stretch. So, and, you know, they, they look at things like that, where, those are definitely, the, the travel costs for sure, we're, we're seeing those quite a bit higher. And of course, our number one cost in the district, when we talk about the general fund, is salaries and benefits. And so, you know, our, we had in, you know, salary increases for all staff, a little higher of a percentage for classified staff. We, the state gave us additional money for healthcare, so we're spending, uh, we passed through those dollars and enhanced our benefit package. Um, and, and those costs, definitely there's gonna be pressures, uh, from, you know, groups as we start going into next year and there, we negotiate that, you know, they're gonna be looking at the cost of their families and hoping that the district can help provide some relief.
So if we kept it at nine point five-two, what does that look like? Do we have to cut things, like, cast programs?
I wouldn't think that would be, that we might have to do some adjustments for sure.
Maybe tighten our belts a little bit with things that we're purchasing?
Yeah, yeah, uh, right, you could look at some things that we're purchasing, we might look at some staffing, you know, sometimes you look at attrition where someone re, you know, resigns or retires and you shift your staffing to cover that, and that's, you know, is, is sometimes, uh, they'll look at that. Um, you know, you could also get, if the state comes through with additional revenues, maybe that makes up some of the gap, there's a lot of.
Uncertainty?
Um, yeah, I mean, you know, the legislature won't meet until January, so, um, you know, on some of those things.
So when you say nine point five-two is actually not status quo, then, cause it doesn't lie at the same value that it did in prior years?
Correct, but I've, you know, I, um, yeah, I mean, for sure, it, it's gonna buy you less. Um, our, our staff costs are higher, um, than two years ago, for sure. Um, I mean, I'm not saying for a number of FTE, just that, you know, we're paying a teacher now, two years later, they've had two years of raises. Um, and increased benefits, so definitely, as those dollars have covered the gap between the state, what they provide, yeah, it's less of covering the gap.
If you throw a last, I like to go with like nine point nine or nine point eight, keeping it still under the ten, but maybe, I mean, just a tiny bit, but still, it combines.
Not during that study plan?
No, just, I just.
And I think that, that thought, we, we did kind of, when we did, did have some of our initial conversation, there was a conversation about the inflation rate and we kind of tried to figure out what that inflation rate was like and how it compared to what the shortage was, the gap was there and what we would, if we were gonna increase that, what that looked like. And I believe that number was over ten, um, but then there's hesitancy to kind of do that. Cause is that what's our, good for our community? Yeah.
We all wear shirts that say margin.
There is a value in keeping it just under the double digits, I mean, it's a visual to people, is it?
It's kind of a mindset. But we know that we're gonna, we're gonna be needing some bond funds probably eventually, so, um, we're gonna be asking again, so we probably should keep it low.
And it is true, Lakeland Middle, it's probably gonna be rocky for a little while.
Yeah.
But it's pretty likely to be case.
But I also believe that the more we educate the community, the more we continue to be transparent with them, true transparency, with showing them the numbers, the needs, the ex, et cetera, of everything.
We should just do free tours through Lakeland Middle School.
Trust me.
I don't know, I don't know, you really need to. I just, three years ago, told my wife, why should I have my kids go to Lakeland Middle School when I was looking at garbage cans catching water?
Isn't that great?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you fix that?
I know you, I know you stay.
But what I'm trying to say is, I don't think our community has been as informed as it has been in the last four months. And I think if we continue to maintain that level of communication with the community, it's not just a one-off situation. The community learns, no, we really want them to know and understand where their money goes and why it's needed. That, I think, could help when we go for a bond. Because there's no other way to erect a new school without a bond.
People who live here recognize that, that we, there's a need there, um, just with all of the conversations that Lynn and I have had with different groups in the last four months. Um, we haven't really had, I can't think of a single encounter where people have just been adamant, uh, adamantly opposed to a supplemental levy. Um, they ask a lot of really good questions and, and we're able to answer them. And every time we go somewhere, that's what I hear from, from the people we're talking to, is, I thought I was gonna be able to get you with one of my questions, but you're prepared with the answers because we're not trying to hide anything, we're just trying to get the information out there. So, they, um, they have been receptive, um, they are asking, what are you gonna do about the growth and when are we gonna have a bond? So they know it's coming. Um, they just want to have the information so that when they vote, they, they know how it impacts them and they know what they can financially support.
On a side note, do you guys get questions asked very often as far as impact fees, the school district here?
Yes.
Like the impact fee this time?
And so I'm gonna tell them that.
It's illegal for us to do that. But, isn't the school district trying to lobby it to potentially change so that they could?
Every year.
So, so just something to think about, if that were to ever pass, that is going to drastically impact your public voting for levies. Cause now they're gonna say, well, you have this other pot of money coming in and so, just, I don't know if we'll ever get there, but.
The legislators don't agree with us and so far they have not.
But I can say that we, um, have, uh, received donations from builders, uh, in support of the school district because builders are becoming more and more aware, uh, that we don't have impact fees that benefit the school. And so, um, thanks to the CFO and his motivation, uh, we've gotten the word out there, so now builders are.
From a city standpoint though, those letters need to get beefed up big time, cause you're just asking for a thousand or two thousand per household, is.
No, actually, we're not asking for a specific dollar amount, we're letting them know that they can make any type of donation they'd like.
I've seen the letter, they have, they specify a thousand.
We've been, we've been tweaking it over.
Yeah, and, and just saying, they, they do need to be more aggressive, cause then the cities can't do much about it, you know, I mean, you're, just like you guys, you're just asking for, but you cite those numbers of a new school and a renovation, we got, you know, half of our schools need a renovation and they're thirty million dollars each, kind of a thing like, put some, put some beef in it.
Well, well, the challenge, I mean, you can, I mean, the, the challenge with that, you're taking a bit of a side train, is that really to, if you're gonna have new group pay for new school, the impact fee would be thirty thousand dollars per, per lot, and that's not gonna happen, right? So, um, and, you know, even in parts of Washington, impact fees are eight, nine thousand, does not pay for a new school. It does, can pay for maybe a wing on a school or, you know, maybe a bunch of portables and things like that, but you're right, impact fees would not solve the problem of actually building a new comprehensive high school, cause that's just a big ticket item, right?
I just.
It's not, it's not an easy answer.
Apple, I know, Apple's just exploded, we have potentially a new subdivision that could bring three hundred more houses, we have three hundred houses now. That, like, that's insane for us. And I can't even begin to imagine from the school district where, what that would do, so, yeah. It's, it's scary.
So when, when it comes time for the bond discussion, we can have an open forum at the middle school.
There you go.
On the wood.
On the wood leeches that you almost bought.
Yeah, but, but just to show the, the.
I think you should, you should do it at one meeting at each of the middle schools, so you can see the disparity.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Problem is, you're only gonna get these to go to this one, and these ones are gonna go to this one, they're not gonna go to every single one to see the difference.
Yeah, this team's been pretty committed, so, we'll see. Okay, so, how about we talk at our tables for a couple minutes, um, and just kind of, and see if you can at your tables come to some sort of an agreement on um, the amounts for the supplemental levy and then the plant facility, and we'll come back together and hear what each table can offer.
Well, we might bring more of this.
But I think some of it is, the, you know, the guy I've worked with, I could, told you, Eric Heringer, who works with Bond across state. He always says, they ask him all the time, what's the right amount? He always says, you know, what community's willing to pass? So you have to sort of weigh that with the needs. I, I would say that, you know, a lot of it's gonna, you know, the recognition come from the board and they're gonna have to sort of, see what they're comfortable with. I mean, for the next two years, if we, if we stayed at the nine point five-two, I mean, we could definitely make it work. But it, it might impact, you know, depending what the state does, you know, when you have people saying, well, jeez, I've had the inflation drop eight percent, I'm gonna eight percent raise, well, I may not be able to do that.
It's different, like.
Cause I really don't have.
It's not a situation where the ability of people lots, like, is decreasing as the dollars increase.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it is, it's, but, yeah, there's not easy answers. Um, you know, if we could account for a little bit of an increase, you know, from a finance perspective, I think that would be beneficial, but I understand the pressures on the other side. You know, they're asked sometimes, or districts, uh, they either ask for flat, just because saying, we're just gonna have, you know, please support us if you have it.
But then when you're talking about taxes, people get taxes, it's completely different than they look at, like.
Sometimes it will be saying, okay, well.
And usually it's not a much incentive to see an increase.
Yeah, maybe a combination of, a ten percent more?
No, it's not.
Or, or, that'd be a lot more, but let's say you said five percent more for two years, two and a half percent.
That's true.
I, you know, I don't know if there's a right answer, I, I think that, uh.
I'm here to retire.
You know, I, I'm not recommending Lisa to be asking us, um, but I definitely understand that it's a challenge if you're significantly asking more. You have to look, you know, our, you know, we did, we dropped a million dollars off, but then it depends on how we're, this is the group and the board wants to support, maybe going back to the plant too, that would, you know, be a factor also.
When he moved from Washington, he, he, he has no clue that this is how it's done.
I just think people look at this big enough, they don't look.
And then we educate the people.
Most people don't, most people how it works.
And we're not having anything.
This and that and not what's gonna happen.
It's hard to estimate.
And so, this is like the goal, cause I think it's a big dollar.
My explanation is like, we helped yourself, the data's not working with us.
We found our schools so bad.
And Dave makes them, couldn't be here, but we asked them to play their voice out there and.
Right.
Nine point three million for two years. That was a suggestion.
Yeah, that's me, that's the back levy.
Exactly.
They don't understand that.
It's funny, you know what I mean?
I'm putting his voice out there, he's gonna be here today.
So if we did, um, nine point two, we increased it by two and a half percent, that's nine point seven-five, nine point seven-six.
I would have to, Brian's, if you did, nine point five-two. Realistically, we need things to ask, well, regardless if we go over, you know, the ten, you know what I mean?
I was thinking eleven, honestly.
Three percent is nine point eight, almost a dollar.
No, we are, but the, but the total amount.
So.
A hundred and seven.
Like, it's almost weed off, you know, um, and, like, we're doing this to help supplement our education, but we also need to keep some of our buildings, you know, maintained and then the law draws, bond is that we need to like, really be honest with our constituents to say this. So, this building is the, like, middle school in the city, like, to help them understand how we're, we're strong, school system needs to be everybody last year.
Cause I think like.
Because I think my. They might have, I was really really community involved then.
Yeah, and we're, we're going to do that, but I just.
How many for Boise? Because these are the schools in this area which, they're very supportive of education. But, um, I don't want to be responsible for taxing people.
I still think it's important for us to separate so they can understand where the money is. So we're going to, this money goes here and this money is dedicated.
Yeah, in my, my opinion, yeah. I would like to, I would like to keep it. Um, just. Sure. Knowing that we're coming back in at some point.
Or is security.
That is, we can't pay protections off. That is not even a main painting.
As far as staff, we are doing security, infrastructure, like, let's say we're adding, or even fencing or something back to come out of the plant. But the people have to come out of that jail. And, and not out of the plant. That could be there, and, and we're actually getting bids on, like, the middle school.
He's actually.
Yeah, they're, they've been getting work orders and that and stuff.
They get work, I could, I could send a guy forty hours a week. I could send guys, a guy forty hours a week to all the schools and that's all he does, is doors and locks. And he starts over, the school we left. I mean, that's really what we're dealing with. And we do the absolute best we can, but it's, it's like daily. They just require a lot of attention. I mean, some of these buildings are, like, the high school, for instance, the main, I mean, you're talking over forty years old. And so your frames and your doors, you know, original, other than the addition that was put on in oh six. We replace locks and things like that, but enclosures, but you're talking main. Structures, frames, doors, it's a, it's a big question. They all need to be replaced tonight. But they, it's, it's a very needy scenario, have multiple. Which, which two doors you got the back specifically over there? The back of the school, the end of the locker room? Into the, yeah, we. Yeah, we just got, we just got a work order on the arc room door last week. The exterior boys locker room and the center hallway, we have brand new locks on them. But the reality is, is those all need to be replaced, doors, frames, everything, everything. I mean, I'll be completely honest, that's what, it, it's a monumental, monumental task that we'll find out. I'm waiting on a bid right now for that building, doors, frames, locks, hardening, all nine yards. Yeah, I mean, that's a safety concern.
Look, I'd say you do some of those things. You know, we've been, like the middle school, we're, you know, we're looking at those doors right now. We actually went to five contractors and four of them said we won't bid. And we got one to give us. Hopefully it'll come in and be reasonable and we'll move forward. But it's, like, it's like glacial. It, it's worse now, for sure. I mean, we've always had the glacial speed of, of sort of the, the public education system. I used to laugh, right? No, you're true, right? Some, you can turn the boat, but sometimes it takes a while.
So the contractor, I, we've never, last year, eighteen months, gets, gets ten minutes worth. Yeah.
I talked to a contractor who moved here like three months ago, he said, he was on the line.
Yeah, we have that business with the big, so like GW Distraction, GW Clark, big, big players. They won't, they wouldn't even look at those because they quite out told me, we just don't have.
And we actually want to give you numbers. Yeah, very, and, you know, we have, and they're really good to us because they wanna have a good relationship with the district because they know work will come. But you know they're busy. Their crews are busy.
If we kept it static, score would go up a little bit. That's maybe gradual step if you go too far.
I'm worried, I, I'm worried if, if, it's, I think it's a challenging fight for sure. And our, our last levy, you know, only passed by, you can see the trend. It was here and it's a slim majority. And, you know, a few, you know, it, you could just see that, that support across all three districts in Cooney County, that's been a consistent trend. The, the, they were, let's say, back twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. So I, I was working for Delaney at the time. Finance circle when we passed the last bond. And, you know, that was well over seventy percent. And, you know, the last plant levy, which was less than the bond. Well, I shouldn't say that because it was longer. But anyway, you know, we got like fifty percent, a little more than fifty percent, so it wasn't that seventy percent. Yeah, it's a tough environment. So, and so we wanna be cognizant of that too and, and the impact. But really, if you look at what Lakeland's done, the last, you know, at least. Four years, you know, even with all the growth and assessed value, that hasn't resulted in, it hasn't resulted in cash because the rates gone down, because we've really been collecting sort of a flatter. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's actually, yeah, it's. Definitely there, of course, people seem taxable sometimes, of course, in the cities, it's certain.
In my opinion, sort of, I'm not seeing any change that way.
I don't know.
I think it definitely has to be, yeah.
Right, right, I, I don't see that, that inflation's killing everybody. Michael Smith, I don't see it affecting.
Yeah, that's a good question. Definitely in my group, I think things are being sort of status quo. And people have been okay, you know, they might be.
I thought it was the favorite.
Adjusting their grocery bill, less steak and more other things, right? Yeah. Yeah, it was, yeah, sort of, I don't know. Yeah, definitely, but, but you talk to everybody and they're like, you know, definitely.
But there are entities simply because of the fact that.
Because we don't even listen to school districts.
That are actually trying to get people to not. Yes, yes.
I mean, I'm seeing.
Right, yeah, I mean, clearly, I don't mind, but. Oh, I, I feel like there is. So, I'm just looking, I just know it was, but it's a long time ago, like, I'm from here, my parents are from here. But they also support public schools. You know, they want to see our community succeed. So, yeah, that's just my perspective as a reporter, that's all.
Is it online?
I, I think that the data shows that some of the, not all of them, but some of the trend the last seven, eight years of having lawsuits because I think having demographic change in the county. And I think that's driving more than other things.
Do you wish for the school board and things like that?
I, no, I think it's, you're having people come from other areas saying that they're specifically moving here wanting lower taxes and that's how they're voting. I mean, I, I, I think the data shows that and you could look at, um, you know, the last levy's passing relatively easy. You know, ten, fifteen years ago, and the percentage has been going down as, as we've had the growth. And I think that's one factor, not the only factor, a factor.
Well, like you were saying, there's outside forces coming that don't even live here. Like we saw with the picketers and stuff.
I'm working on that.
And we don't need people to understand how public schools are funded. I know, we have people who come from. Don't know that, like, at least a quarter of the last full search, like, it's three quarters, three quarters.
That would lie.
Anyways, okay.
So, um, we'll start with this table over here. Jared, what did you, what did you guys, what do you think?
Well, we, we, uh, my words were, let's not overthink it in terms of the nine point five to crossing that ten million threshold in, in this, in this arena. And look at what is act, and Brian, we'd have to really defer to you in what actual status quo would actually be. Because if we're doing, asking the same thing as last year and with inflation and everything, we would know that that's not actually meeting status quo, it's meeting just a little bit less than. So, we were, we would propose taking the, the supplemental levy from current plus nine percent and then in addition to that, I mean, like, on a, on a, same ballot, but run separately. That's what we would propose.
So you're proposing the nine percent?
To the current supplemental.
Or whatever the inflation rate that Brian, that you guys would be comfortable with.
Yeah.
How much would that be?
Nine percent would be nine thousand.
Ten three, isn't it?
Ten three.
Ten percent is nine fifty, so.
It's forty-five dollars.
So what did you guys?
Is that right?
Steph.
Steph, where's that? So what are you gonna cut? Because you're not gonna cover what's all on that list.
That's a great question for the superintendent.
No, I think I tossed her out too. It's certainly overthinking it, but if it doesn't go no matter what the amount, then it's just everything. So, you gotta weigh that out too.
Sure, yeah, that was really what caused me to go down from my initial thought of aduquation and add growth is there's significant probability that it doesn't pass, looking at the trend, is it really passing?
Then all those things go.
Well, and the fact of the sixty-seven percent, you know, you were talking about the people coming into the district. It's just learning to know what's, what's out there and what people are gonna look for.
The last levy only passed with forty-one votes. What we needed, we had it, it was forty-one. It was not a landslide, it was not a, we support you, it was, it was scary.
Wasn't that COVID year, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one or twenty-one?
And what kind of education were we giving toward, giving to the voters? What, what kind of material was it?
Well, we weren't doing what, we definitely weren't doing what I'm doing now. Becky and I did some, like, town hall type meetings where we had a presentation and people came and we talked to ad people. We're not doing that this time. We're sitting down and talking with people and just listening to questions and answering their questions. And they've been, like I said, they've been really supportive, but it's, you know, we've been in front of probably twelve small groups so far. We have lots more to tackle. Lynn and I are sitting down with Brett Reagan tomorrow night to talk to him about our levy.
And I noticed out of that last time too, there was very little information. I mean, I'm always a ES, but I bet that was my biggest, that was telling Jennifer, like, no wonder barely passed it, there was no information.
So we're sending the mailers home, we didn't do that last time. So we sent the one in August and then the next one will go out, um, at the end of this month with more levy information, um, with the date of the board meeting. So anybody who wants to come to the board meeting, when we do the presentation to the board with the recommendation from this committee, they'll be there if they want, or they can watch it after it's posted.
Because last time, there was like a mail type thing mainly?
Yeah, we didn't send anything in the mail. So nobody outside of the school district.
So unless you opened up that email and read through it in, like, terms of.
We might have had some stuff in the press, I know we were on the street.
Devon's really good at helping things in the press for us, so we were, we definitely ran. But even in talking to the groups we've been talking to, we have a lot of people who are not, they don't know. They're not purchasing the press, you know, so, and we don't have a local, that's as local as it is, the local press.
I would say the flyer, it attracted my eye immediately. I don't know if it's because I was in education, but I read the whole thing and, you know, there wasn't too much on it. It was just a nice size. I think, look at it in the mail.
That's what we're gonna do. And so there'll be another one that will go home, um, at the end of February, right? So we'll do October and then in the January, um, beginning of February. And then we may do one extra one right before the vote, just to make sure that we're answering the questions that we're hearing from the community so people have accurate information.
What did you say about the picketers?
My meeting with Brett Reagan is, is the head of the County Republican Central Committee. Lynn and I are meeting with him tomorrow, and we're meeting with their executive board a week from tomorrow to talk about. They are watching what we're doing and they are liking how we're doing it in this district. And so, if we can keep picketers from being there, they may not openly support us, but if they don't openly oppose us, that would be no man for us, so. Yeah, so we're gonna go have that. And I was invited, I didn't ask to go, I was invited to come, so.
So you guys are at the nine point three?
Nine point five.
Nine point five. We were at ten point two, ten point three. What if you cut that down and go nine point seven, nine point eight? Would that survive? Would that make everybody happy? Or is that still too much?
I'm, I just, I just keep going back to, what is it that we need to do in order to not make cuts? That, that would be the number, what's that?
Just maintain.
Just to maintain, because, you know, every, every cut is a, I mean, we think every cut is a child. You know, whatever, whatever service they're going to be provided or then not providing, every, every cut could be a staff member of some sort. I mean, I know you guys have to, you have, I know there's a lot more to it than just as simple as that, but I would just like to know what a number is to not make a cut. I, I need to know what it is.
I don't think anyone knows, I tried to get it up, Brian.
We tried to get a lot of things up, Brian.
Every quarter year. Well, the, the challenge, it's not our only revenue source. So if suddenly the state of Idaho went, every district gets another thirty-seven million dollars and woo, right?
Right.
If they say, right, they don't set the budget till April, so it's, it's an annual thing.
Move it up.
So even if we don't do that, if we were to get, heaven forbid, thirty-seven million, I mean, we could put that in potentially a rainy day plan, if I'm correct, and do like we talked the last time and have some money to go to the voters to say, like, we need to build a new middle school and we've got this much money in the budget already saved up, so that's that much less money we need in a bond?
Sure, you can put.
Can you do it that way?
I, there's a, yeah, there's a lot of ways you could do it. I, generally, I think what's gonna happen is the state is gonna provide additional resources. Often when they provide those additional resources, they tell you how to spend it. So. you do have that and, and that's a lot of good stuff, but since you're spending as directed on those things that just impact you as your daily operations with your dollar bill available, you haven't really increased those, so if they give me increased salary and say, this is specifically for staffing, you know, we can definitely, that's a good thing, it goes to, you know, increasing teacher or classified staff pay, that's all, but that doesn't help in my diesel bill.
Right.
You know, but I think in a, when you get in, you know, I like to tell everybody that, you know, it shouldn't maybe have to be this way, but the school district, you know, finance and the way that it's evolved in most states, it, you know, the budgets are dynamic and complex, and, and they, and what you know today may not be what you know two weeks from now, as circumstances dictate. You know, for the next two years, if we have the levy support that, that currently is on the books, given additional state and depending on where we land with, you know, salaries and benefits and stuff like that, I mean, as a general rule, our program probably look pretty similar, but there might be some tweaks here and there, there might be some consolidation of para educator support, or maybe a few classes a little larger, or maybe you don't offer the same electives and go through IDLA. There's a lot of options and a lot of those, you know, I'll give the numbers, but I'm not the ultimate decision maker, that's really gonna be, you know, the board and the superintendent, principals looking at the program and how they can, you know, with the resources they have, still deliver it the best they can.
I mean, is it safe for us, I mean, we know there's money coming from the state, but we don't know what, so is it safe to go a little bit shorter, knowing that we're gonna get some money, but we don't know what, we don't know how we're gonna be told to spend it? Or do we split the difference and go the nine seven and know that we're going to have the funds to pay for the things that we need in taking into account inflation, I mean, any budget is dynamic, and we need, healthcare budgets are dynamic, so.
I, you know, I could certainly say that, you know, if, if the levy does not pass, then there's significant changes, right? There, there's no getting around that. If the difference between a couple hundred thousand dollars, nine point, let's say, seven five and nine point five two, the big picture, you know, Dr., yeah, you know, Lynn and Lisa and with the team and working with the board, we would, you know, you're gonna sort of maintain the program and move forward with, you know, tweaks here and there, but it wouldn't be, I wouldn't think significant. But those are the, you know, sort of the, you know, the challenges, right? And some of your, you know, if, if we went down though, if we said, alright, we have nine point five two and, but we think that the past, we have to go down to eight point five two, well, okay, now we're, now, you know, we're gonna have to adjust something at that point, cause now we really are sort of, you know, reducing some resources.
What I really think should be brought to the board is, you know, cause what I hear everyone saying is, you know, ideally, it would be safe to just go and ask for what we currently have, to just replace that, but the realization is there is inflation, so on a nine percent increase, maybe we need to consider, the board needs to hear that from you all, so that we understand how you came up with the range of the number, um, which will give the board insight to, to listen to your thoughts of, you know, we, we don't wanna lose teachers, we don't wanna impact students in a negative way. We don't wanna upset the, the taxpayers in the sense of, you know, we need more money, but we, we're not really sure how much, I mean, we, we need to hear that. And so I think it would be prudent to say, you know, a starting level for this levy for supplemental should be the, what we've had before. There's a suggestion to raise it to nine percent due to cost of inflation, uncertain inflation that, you know, you can't necessarily measure, given the flexibility that it has, but so that the board knows what y'all are working with and what we need to consider when we're trying to figure, um, you know, what we should do.
So would you suggest that, that a few of us come and speak to the board, or?
The board would love that.
Yeah, I actually, so I put this little, this little PowerPoint together, slideshow.
And you're the presenter.
Yeah, and the goal would be to have.
Giving my message, you know?
Yep, the goal would be to have several of this team there to do the presenting, so it's not coming from me, it's, um, it's not my voice that matters in this, it's this, it's this group's voice.
It matters.
That's true, but not in this case. Uh, yes.
When you go on out about, you have a lot of people asking about the money that the governor appropriated, that hasn't been appropriated yet?
They, they, I've gotten a couple of questions about that, you know, what are you doing with that money, and well, governor.
Don't have it.
Yeah, until JFAC appropriates it, we don't know what that looks like and how much we're getting, and that won't happen until.
This is probably gonna be a huge hurdle.
Um, actually, I think right now the bigger one is, what have you done with, with the COVID dollars? So, and that's an easy one for me to answer, and as soon as I start talking about it, people are like, oh, okay, well, that makes sense. So, but it is going to be a question that will be on their mind, especially once the legislative session starts, and unfortunately, our, if we choose the March date, our vote will happen before JFAC appropriates the dollars, so we won't know what that looks like.
So would it be better to push it out till May?
Well, we could do that, the, the issue with that is if it doesn't pass, we have to rid nine point five million dollars worth of people in cut programs.
Because Brian can. We could put another one in August.
Well, we could, but Brian can't build a budget, he has to, his budget has to be submitted to the board for approval in June, and it has to be ready to go July first, so it doesn't give us an opportunity to rerun it if we have to. And so we just are gonna have to be good with our messaging about what, what that could look like. And your, your point Erica about being mindful of that and knowing how to do what, what the needs are of the district and how we could use that money to offset tax burden. At a later date, is something that we could talk about.
Hoping, hoping that they will appoint some money for the buildings.
That would be nice, we, that's, when you talk to superintendents, that's the number one concern in the state is buildings. They, you know, I, I've heard, well, we gave you a million dollars, you know, you could buy a curriculum with that, well, yep, we could, but you gave us ten million, we could actually maybe do something with buildings. So we're just kinda waiting to see what they're gonna do. So Michelle, I think what I heard you say is on this slide, maybe we have a range, we put a range there so that then we can talk to the board about the range that this group has talked about, so that would be the nine point five two million, two, what was the nine percent?
Ten point three. Ten point three seven.
And the supplemental by law can only be run for two years, so it would be nine point five two or somewhere between that and this, um, each year for two years. The plant facility levy, we can run for up to ten years. Ten years is a long time, because just like what we're, what's happening right now with inflation, the costs have gone way up and you're locked in. Um, and so at the last meeting, some of us were talking about, if we did a six year, then we would have two supplemental levies where the only thing we need to focus on was supplemental, and then in the third one, it would be supplemental and plant again. Where if we did a five, we'd have supplemental, a plant, and then a supplemental, so three years in a row, we'd be going back to back to the community members. So that's, so I just threw that out there, um, to see what you guys thought, and I think, Emma, I think I'm hearing that everybody's feeling comfortable with the one point one four six for plant facility, or are you wanting to talk about a range for that?
Well, when you talk about six years, then one, what, six, six years from now is not gonna be a six, this.
Well, with your needs on doors and stuff like that, maybe you push the security thing and your message.
I forgot about the secure part, I don't know, should we talk about the length of it? So.
Do you see a follow up?
So I'm gonna put one point one four six, that's what we were at.
A few years ago, yeah. I don't know, if the messaging is out there. You know, if, if somebody knew how inefficient that middle school was, what it's costing the district in electricity, gas, just to heat that thing, so if you had a new school. You know, that might be important. I mean, I.
Do you want a range here?
I would say it would quite a bit of money, getting efficient at schools. Oh, for sure.
I almost kinda think we should run it the same, um, because we're just mentioning that hopefully we will run a bond somewhere in there as well.
And the board has, um, we are using our COVID dollars in a way that allows us to not spend general fund dollars that we have budgeted for certain things, so that those dollars can be, set aside to help bridge the gap of the plant facility. So, so there will be some COVID dollars that we can use also.
What, what would be the cost for, I'm sure you know, the security on all the schools to get it up to where it needs to be?
A lot of money.
A lot?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll have a better idea once Mike finally gets a quote for the doors at Dickland Middle School. We don't, we don't know what that's gonna cost.
We definitely need to get that number up before we get the security up.
Well, if I had, if I had my brothers, we would have six foot fences around our elementary playgrounds and not four foot fences, that's an expensive proposition, changing out those fences, but.
Just add a couple feet of barbed wire.
Their school's no.
Raise your arms. The kids will stay away from the fences. Muzzle guards with guard towers too.
Okay, so do you want a range here, or do you wanna stick at one point one four six?
I think, I think you should bump it up just for the fact you need to add in for security.
So what are you suggesting, Jason, one point what?
I don't know what that, you know, you guys, whatever that number would be, you get, you know, door, and then you don't have that number now.
So one point five?
You think that would cover some?
I, I think it's, well, it's one, it would be that amount every year for six years, so.
And that would be, could be a great part for your messaging too, is this is, to secure, be building for your children, your grandchildren.
I guess I don't know what the, what the list of projects does, what, what can a million dollars every year towards the facilities do, like you said, you, you took six years just to do the, um, roofs, kind of a thing. What's that next big small ticket item that would fall under these, you mentioned the, the locks on the doors. What else, like, I mean, you, you're gonna have to specify that to the, to the public, like, what that might have been, so it's hard to know right now without looking at what those project lists.
Well, Mike, Mike actually has like a, like a ten year plan or a twenty year plan for all of the systems.
Essentially, it's, it's aggressive maintenance, so like in this case here, I would, I would start diving into siding, windows, doors, things of that nature, um, probably a building, like the roof is probably a building a year, you know, something like that, um, I don't know about the safety and security part of it, I'm not too, doors and things like that, yes, but I don't know, like, can, you know, what, what the planner view that way, cameras and, other than the keyless, because I'm not necessarily involved in that.
And the board's already authorized all of that, so.
Yeah.
And then you said the board was doing a workshop as well, trying to prioritize.
Yeah, they talked about, we haven't scheduled it yet, but they, they did agree that a workshop would be beneficial and help them prioritize capital projects.
And some of the dollars of the plant fund over the years too, have, since we've had it, have literally just truly maintained the building, so, for example, we just replaced the boiler at.
Timberlake High School.
Timberlake High School. So, in, you know, and in a sense, that wasn't, um, it was work that was needed to be done, but the, you don't really see that work, right? It's just, the building was warm yesterday, the building's warm today, so, you know, and so some of that, you know, is, you know, maintaining, you know, some of the systems that go down, we have old individual heaters in some of the, of, of the buildings, like John Brown Blue is individual heaters, well, when they go out, we just go replace that heater, it's, and, you know, and that, so some of those unforeseen things, that's what happens with the plant facility levy. It's, the plant facility levy is also, you know, bought, um, you know, equipment, you know, so to maintain, you know, the grounds and, uh, you know, we, mowers are aged and a new commercial mower is thirty five thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars, you know, those are the types of things that is also, you know, supported and.
I just, when, I'm sensitive, I guess, to the word maintain, when you say the maintain, cause they're, the boilers, that's putting out fires, that's not maintaining, that's putting out another need that, that jumped up ahead of everything else, cause that's the huge priority, so it's nice to have that, but the general public in advance are voting on something, they think when you say maintained, and yet we see that the buildings are, are not maintained, they're, you're, you're, you're keeping the lights on, you're keeping the building warm, kind of a thing, and so I guess.
Yeah, we're basically chipping away at big.
Right.
Picture stuff essentially, so like in this, in this situation here, what I would do, I mean, what I would propose would be trading a roof project for a siding project. Getting into the next layer of a building, although it's not the end all, it's still rooted forward.
There, there could be some buildings we go that we end up having to replace a parking lot, you know.
Spirit Lake Elementary.
Spirit Lake Elementary right there, and so, you know, since you start ripping and tearing asphalt and doing, redoing sidewalk, just the site work in itself is significant dollars.
Okay, so we have an eleven minutes, so I have to release you. Where would you like, what do you want me to put here? Remember, the board's gonna discuss this and they ultimately get to make the decision, we just will have to talk to them about why we chose the ranges that we chose.
But I would say then, then let's go ahead and, and choose a, like, do a range, and then the board can decide where they wanna land.
For the same reason that you would do the range on the other one, this has gone six years.
Do you wanna do the nine percent inflation rate on this like you did on the other, or do you?
Hundred percent, I'd say a lot more on this over six years, of course, it's likely to be the full time. Intent to open a can of worms here.
Go ahead.
So, I've been thinking about the probability that a sixty seven percent threshold this cross for a bond, that's like ten times the average ask, seems pretty unlikely to happen in the next several years. Um, so the only other way, if you actually need to build a new school to do that, or to significantly renovate one, is probably you'd have a high plant facility levy and just snowball it for a period of years, is that wrong? I'm not saying, it's not for to collide, maybe I'll be wrong, but this is.
You sounded so smart in that moment, I thought you knew what you're talking about.
So, so if that is the case, maybe you want to do two years or something instead of six years, I don't know, I think we said, Brian, do a dough, whether this is something reasonable to think about or not.
Yeah, there's some, it, it depends, if you're, if you're gonna, if you're just gonna do a two year, then, then, then you would just do a supplemental, you wouldn't do a plant, because it's five percent less to pass, so, you know, so to do a plant, you definitely wanna at least extend it to three or above, cause um, just from that point of view, I, some districts have looked at trying to do a high plant to, for like a building standpoint, tried that a few years ago, and then try to finance some of that and.
Right, that's your mark, they need to finance it too.
Yeah, the Idaho law allows you to do some of that, but, um, but it.
But you're getting, you're getting close to that sixty seven percent threshold.
Yeah, depending how much, the plant facility levy, depending how much you're asking relative to your tax basis or formula, it's fifty five percent, sixty, or sixty six and two thirds.
It's a rate that goes up.
It goes up if you start asking more.
Okay.
So there is a, we'd have to run those numbers on when you could do it, at, at the one point one, we're definitely well below hitting the sixty, so we're fine at the fifty.
Do you, what is the sixty threshold?
It's a, I think I had it on the other side, it's, it's a calculation of how much you have voted debt and a percentage of your, like, point zero zero four percent or something of your tax base. I, I'd have to take a look at it, yeah.
Probably not the one.
Yeah, so.
If we put the range to, or just below that threshold.
It'd be a lot of money, but that. It, it'd be a lot of money, but now you're asking for, your tax rate's gonna go up quite a bit, though, now, right? I mean, so think about, let's say you asked for, um, you know, five million, well, then you know that now you're hitting fifty cents per thousand or so, because of that million we have, we had a, what, twelve cents, so sixty cents per thousand. Now, it, that, I mean, that, that would show up on people's tax bills, they'd, they'd notice that. So that, that's what you sort of weigh, I mean, a lot of reasons why, you know, bonds eventually end up do passing is because, you know, you're able to spread that cost of that bond, of that borrowing over the course of twenty years. And, and so it minimizes the impact. It's sort of philosophic, some people say bonds are more fair, so that, let's say, let's say we passed a, a plant levy for a couple of years and it was really high and you built a building. So all those people, for, let's say, for those five years, those taxpayers, they built the building. That is good for forty years. A bond over twenty years, I, I pass that bond, and then ten years later, somebody moves in and they buy a house, they help pay for that bond, at least they help, they have those skin in the game on the taxes. So there's, but then you pay interest, you know, that's the flip side, it costs you more because you, it's like buying your house. So anyway, there's a lot of, yeah, I, I guess districts and, you know, even fire departments and cities and counties all sort of wrestle with, you know, how to, where's that happy medium?
What if the range was one-point-six-four-six, and then that would give you, you know, the same amount plus an additional five-hundred thousand a year to do a siding project or a new roof or a new parking lot? You know, every year you'd be getting half a million dollars to where you could.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that becomes, yeah, it's like, you know, significant, for sure.
That could potentially bump a building, like, if you did the siding somewhere and that included roofs and from, from poor to fair, we're fair to good, correct? Would that give you a little bit of a leeway?
Yeah, on the rating, though, current rating we have, some of our older buildings almost will never be rated above.
Yeah, but like, if you're gonna target it towards, you know, like, like, we were talking like north-south, you know, in the district, like, you should totally like get one of the newer schools maybe up to that good or fair range.
Right.
Knowing that we're gonna probably have to run a bond to replace Athol Elementary and Lakeland Middle School, like.
Okay, so I, I put down, is everybody okay with Jason's idea? Are you okay with the six-year term?
Yeah.
No, it's also covering inflation, that, you know, would happen if, you know, it continued to rise, it'd also maybe a little bit of a disparity.
And then March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three would be the election date that we ran in March. Our, so our options are.
Good, is that the, is that the, the first time that we can run it?
We could, yeah, we, we've already missed the window for the November election.
Okay.
So then March is the next option, and then May, and then August.
Okay.
Those are our four dates that we can use. This gives us an opportunity to, if it doesn't pass, to figure out what, why it didn't pass and make whatever adjustments we need to make and come back in May with enough time for Brian to write a budget.
And when does the board have to make the decision?
Um, it's about to here, the timeline is down. It's not here anymore. Um, my, my goal for them would be that we take this to them, this presentation at the, the November board meeting. Um, they'll have an opportunity to hear the recommendation from the team, ask questions of the team, have some discussion amongst themselves, and then we'll have it as an action item for the December board meeting. Um, and at that board meeting, they'll have to decide that whether or not we're running both, and the amounts and the date. They'll have to agree on all of that, and if they agree with the team and choose March, we have to have a resolution language has to be approved at the January board meeting, so we can get it to the counties and time.
I believe it's late January is when you have to submit it to the county.
Yeah, so it's a kind of a tie, but it does give them an opportunity to hear it and discuss it at one meeting and then be able to come back and make, take action at the next. So our next, uh, regularly scheduled meeting is the Monday before the board meeting, November seventh. Uh, if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to just spend that board meeting kinda going through this slideshow. You can help me edit in whatever way you want, and then we can talk about who can be at the meeting and, um, who wants to talk about which, uh, part of it, so that, uh, the board gets to hear from this team.
And what, is, is it November ninth, the next board meeting?
Is there food at the board meeting? Do they serve pie? Because I do want a piece of my pie. They're still tired of us, aren't they? I know.
It was really good.
It was good. I think I had two pieces. You did, you sent me a picture and said you had pie. It's all right, Jason.
Okay, so we have just one minute, is everybody okay with kind of this, uh, the next steps and moving forward? We didn't really talk about permanent levy, other than to give you that information, I just wanna make sure that we're all in agreement that this is not the time to ask for permanent levy.
Yeah, next year we're, uh.
I did put, um, I kind of wrote this as if I were running an IEP and we had to talk about the things that we discussed and, but, um, rejected. So I put all of our brainstorms in here. Just run the supplemental levy this year, increase the supplemental, and just run the one, run the permanent supplemental, and then what our actual recommendation was. So that way we can talk to the board about all of the brainstorms and the thought processes that we went through to get to the point where we were ready to make a recommendation. Is there anything else, Michelle, that you would need from this team, other than?
No, I just, I know that the board wants to hear what you guys have to say and why, um, because it does, it, it is very much taken into consideration when we make decisions.
They prefer to hear from you than, than.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
We always. So.
Yep. So, we'll go through the presentation, you can help me tweak it, so it's pretty, since that's what you wanted to say, but I just did a draft, because it's easier to start from something than it is to create something like a big group like this. Okay, it's seven-thirty, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Leon.